Hello and welcome to the Farmington City Council Candidate Public Forum. We are here at the Farmington City Hall and I am your host Luke Porter. I have been a Farmington small business owner for the past 11 years and I currently own and operate Moving Tree Media, which is a web design, video production, and digital marketing firm. As a local Farmington business owner, we are happy to provide the video and audio services for tonight. My partner in planning this event is Cara Hilgrith. She has been a local news reporter here in the city of Farmington and neighboring communities for the past 10 years. We are coming here together tonight because we feel it's important for local Farmington residents to not only get to know their candidates better, but to see the kinds of issues that our city leaders have to face. We have five candidates who are running for a four-year term on the Farmington City Council. In accordance with COVID-19 guidelines, our candidates are socially distanced and we are filming this with no audience. The candidates tonight are Eric Edwards, Katie Porter, Leroux Cosse, Robin Craig, and Steve Wilson. Since this is a public forum and not a debate, each candidate will receive the same questions and there will be no interruptions. Also, the responses will be timed. When you hear one small ding, it does not mean that the candidate has run out of time. What that means is they have 15 seconds left to finish up their response. When you hear two dings, then they are out of time. And if they keep going, I will unleash the full power of the bell with many dings. Each candidate will be able to give a two-minute introduction before we get into the questions. And I don't see a fly on anybody's head, so I think we are ready to start. And we will begin with Mr. Edwards.
Hello, my name is Eric Edwards. First, I would like to take this time to thank you, the Farmington community, for allowing me this opportunity to connect with you. Serving the community has always been at the core of who I am and has been at the center of our family as my wife and I have raised our three children. We have always strived to find the need and do our best to fulfill the needs around us. I also believe in serving the community around you allows you to establish relationships and build a strong foundation, which in turn sustains a long-lasting future and in the case of living that out to build off of the strong foundation that Farmington already has and continuing to move forward to that sustained future. I've always admired the rich history that Farmington has, which is one of the reasons my wife and I decided to move our family downtown, to continue to invest in the heart of the community. It begins at the core and moves out to what Farmington has grown to today. We have loved this little community and the opportunity to be a part of it as it continues to grow. I believe in what Farmington is and also what it can potentially be. Small-town heart, big-picture thinking. This is what my goal would be if you were to elect me to Farmington City Council. I would strive to maintain the small-town heart and the core of what Farmington is and not lose that character that it possesses, but to also continue to grow so that we don't become a forgotten city. Farmington is a special place and it should have the opportunity to prosper alongside the people who call it home and will call it home in the future. I would consider this a great privilege to have the opportunity to serve this community and call my home as your city councilman. I will strive to be informed and aware of our ever-changing culture and will actively listen and will put into action integrity and heart into all that I do. I am looking forward to the time ahead as we discuss the topics that matter to you. Thank you.
Ms. Porter, your two-minute introduction.
Good evening and thank you to the city of Farmington for allowing us to meet here tonight, as well as to Cara and Luke for reaching out to the candidates and putting this forum together. My name is Katie Porter and my husband Noah and I moved to Farmington almost 11 years ago. At the time, we had a two-year-old boy and I was pregnant with our first daughter Bethany, who was your very own Little Miss Farmington ambassador this last year in 2019, 2020. Noah was set to leave for basic training with the Minnesota Army National Guard, which he has now been a part of for 10 years, excuse me, within a month of our moving here. So we needed to be closer to family to help support us during the time of his absence. We have since bought a home here and had three more amazing children and have become very familiar with the rising need for growth in many areas of the city. Growing up in New Ulm, Minnesota, I was well acquainted with and certainly very fond of the small-town charm of a historic city in the middle of farm country. I have deep roots in that city, ones which I am very proud of. I'm a very passionate leader by nature and when I find a place that feels like home, as I have here in Farmington, excuse me, I treat it as such with great care and dedication. I have been involved with the local Yellow Ribbon Network, volunteered with Trinity Care Center here in town, as well as with the local food drive earlier this year and community meal put on by Loaves and Fishes at Faith United Methodist Church. As I mentioned, our oldest daughter was involved with the ambassadors program this last year, which gave us another wonderful opportunity to become more involved with local events and to serve our own community. And prior to COVID, I was actively involved in helping with the due days committee and planning. We are members at Homestead Community Church here in the heart of downtown and we are passionate about helping create and maintain a vibrant and welcoming community to raise our children in. Thank you.
Mr. Cosse, your two-minute introduction.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leroux Cosse and I am running for Farmington City Council. First off, I would like to thank Luke Porter and Moving Tree Media, as well as the city of Farmington for hosting this public debate forum. I am a lifelong resident of Farmington. I graduated from Farmington High School in 2017 and I am currently attending Inver Hills Community College in pursuit of my business degree. From a young age, I have been very politically active. I started as a page in the Minnesota House of Representatives High School Page Program and then I served as a student member on the ISD 192 Farmington School Board. And most recently, I interned at the White House for the Presidential Writers and the Office of Presidential Correspondence. Throughout my years here in Farmington, the city has greatly improved, but there is still more work to be done. My priorities are simple. We must remain on the path of fiscal stability. To do this, my goals are to continue to pay down the city's debt while ensuring that our tax rates do not rise. To promote financial growth, it is vital to ensure our infrastructure is strong moving forward. In order for Farmington to gain economic prosperity, we must encourage and attract new businesses, as well as retaining the businesses that we currently have. This will help lead us toward Farmington's economic success. We need to establish and prioritize projects that are within the city's budget. The city council should be open and transparent with the citizens and the decisions that are made. I am a goal-oriented, hands-on leader and I will help bring the city of Farmington toward a promising future.
Ms. Craig, you have two minutes for your introduction.
My name is Robin Craig and I just want to thank here again the city of Farmington for holding this tonight and for Cara and Luke to be offering their services for us this evening so that we can have a chance to explain our feelings and what we want to accomplish in Farmington, so I appreciate that. My husband Ethan and I have lived in Farmington for 17 years. We have one daughter, Jessica, and three granddaughters. And Ethan currently is working at Wells Fargo as a national appraisal reviewer. My background, I am retired right now, but my background was in business development, negotiations, training, networking, and those skills that I learned during the 35 years that I was doing that kind of work is really what I think has helped me since I am currently serving in the city council. It's given me the experience, the background to be able to work with all the different issues, topics, and five different personalities that are on the council to come to a conclusion and a decision about what we think is best for Farmington. It's not always easy and at times we have to fight through things, but I think it's really important that each person that is in the council is willing to take a stand and can hold a position and has a backbone if they believe in something. And I am that type of person, yet we all in the end want the same thing, to make Farmington the best place to live in and we come together and we make a decision that's best for Farmington. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Wilson, you have two minutes for your introduction.
Hello, Farmington residents. I know that you will be watching this somewhere in your house probably, or if you're a business, same there as well. And just want to thank city of Farmington and Moving Tree Media for putting this together tonight and looking forward to the opportunity to potentially serve you again in the city council. So my wife Andrea and I moved to Farmington back in 2004. And it's interesting, I was thinking about this earlier today, at that time, my oldest son Josh was four. In fact, we celebrated his birthday the day we closed in our house. He's now a junior at Gustavus. My son Ben is a senior at Farmington High School and was just two. And my lovely daughter Elizabeth is a freshman at Farmington High School. Both my son Ben and Josh will be first-time voters. They have committed to voting for their dad. Of course, it's no way for me to validate with a ballot, but I'm going to take their word for it as my two awesome sons that they are in fact voting for their dad. Like many of you, we moved to Farmington because we knew that it was a special place. It felt like a special place and it continues to be that. One comment I make, which, you know, a lot of residents come up to me and say, you know, Steve, you know, we want more of this, we want more of that, and I get that. And, you know, I'm hoping that we're going to talk about business development and expansion at some point in time today. But the one thing that really makes Farmington unique versus our neighbors is the fact that we really care about each other. I have never seen a community that rallies around, you know, someone that is going through a cancer struggle or a disease struggle, a mental health struggle. And that is what makes Farmington so unique. And, you know, that uniqueness and that character about us, I expect to continue and looking forward to serving you in the leadership of a city council position. Thank you.
So we will rotate the question order, so the same person is not always answering first or last. So we'll move on to you, Ms. Porter, with the first question. What inspired you to run for a council seat and what leadership skills will you bring to the council if elected? You have three minutes.
I think the easiest way to answer is typically, once you become a parent, I think that inspires you to do a lot of things that you may not have done as a younger person. Like I mentioned, we have five children that are in the Farmington district here and striving to make this a place that they can grow and develop essentially is the main reason that I would want to run. Also, in talking to business owners around town, especially this year with the struggle that we're all facing, I think there's just a need for authenticity, there's a need to be approachable. And I'm inspired by the people of Farmington. Like Steve mentioned, I think this community, for example, rallying around Wang's when they were struggling to stay open and, you know, someone started a GoFundMe and it really went from there. Seeing that kind of care within a community is certainly inspirational enough to want to really put time and effort into making it a better place. And so that would be my number one reason, my family and my community. Leadership skills that I bring to the table, I've always been a person of character and I believe that that speaks strongly, just in the people that know me, my morals, my values. Like I said, in high school, I was a part of student council, you know, and from there I've been in various different positions where I've worked with people from Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge, with Recovering Addicts, and for Ebenezer, which is a senior living community. And so just multifaceted, I think that I'm diverse and, you know, like I said, I deeply care for people. And so I think the authenticity and the transparency in the way that I live my life, it's created great leadership qualities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cosse, the question again. What inspired you to run for a council seat and what leadership skills will you bring to the council if elected? You have three minutes.
So what inspired me to run for city council? Like most of the people, or a lot of people in Farmington, I should say, I am a lifelong resident and like all of us running here today and all of my fellow candidates, I know that we all love this town and want to see some change for the better, probably as well as residents and business owners. But going around through the community and listening to all the different needs of our homeowners, of our business owners, and all of our individual residents, I do see a lot of room for improvement and change. So I decided that I would give city council a try and hopefully I could make a change for the better in that sense. As someone who's a leader on the city council, the decisions that you make aren't always popular decisions, not always going to be easy decisions, but they are decisions that have to be made on behalf of the city and on behalf of the residents. Leadership skills that I can help bring to that is you have to be a strong leader and you have to be goal-oriented, lay out a plan and say, well, this is what we're going to look at this week and, you know, next month and next month. We have to lay out a detailed plan of our goals for the city and what our goals for the town will be, you know, goal-oriented. And also just being a strong leader, you have to make decisive decisions and like I said, they're not always popular decisions, but, you know, if the city is going to go, if the residents aren't always going to be happy with the decisions you make, but sometimes they're decisions that are necessary from, you know, the city or the government standpoint. So just being also a strong leader and a hard leader as well. But yeah.
Ms. Craig, same question. What inspired you to run for a council seat and what leadership skills will you bring to the council if elected? Your three minutes starts now.
When I ran four years ago for the city council, I had very clear-cut ideas of how I wanted to serve and why I wanted to run for the position. And those still have not changed. My top three priorities would be taxes and debt, economic development by broadening the tax base and supporting existing businesses, and civic engagement by keeping residents informed on vital issues impacting Farmington. I think that there has been a lot of improvements that have happened in the last four years and hopefully I'll have a chance to collaborate on them a little bit more later on. But I do think that taxes and debt is something that continues to be a struggle and something that we continue to work on. One of the things that I will let people know that they may or may not be aware of is that, I'm just speaking of the city council now, has kept their promises as lowering the tax debt. Last year, the tax levy was a minus .49. The year before that, it was 2.87. So we have tried to keep that in line and I think that that's something that a lot of people are concerned about in the city is the taxes. And like I said, hopefully I can elaborate on that a little bit more later on. But during this election cycle, I think one of the things that's important to remember is that with COVID, we have a lot of struggles and a lot of unknowns that are still going to happen and a lot of challenges that still face us. And we have a relatively young city council. As a matter of fact, I will be the senior council member, being in the council only four years outside of Terry Donnelly. So I think that it's really important to have some continuity and stability this year and in the next three years, as we don't know exactly when this COVID is going to end. I think that all of us work well together in the council, we understand each other, we know what our strengths and weaknesses are, and we work well together to come together to do what we feel is best for Farmington. But I think the thing that is most important to me is that my passion, I have to serve. I wanted to serve when I first ran four years ago, but my passion has increased immensely. And it does have to do with some of the things that's already been mentioned. It has to do with all the people I've come to know, the businesses, the residents of Farmington that I didn't know before I was in the council. And this town is amazing and this town is very special and unique, I think, and it's something that I'm proud to say that I serve and work for. But I think the other thing is, is that because of the inspiration I have received from a lot of people that I've met, it's given me a greater devotion, respect, and love for Farmington and I would be honored to continue to serve for another four years. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, what inspired you to run for a council seat and what leadership skills will you bring to the council? And I feel like a game show host for saying this, but your three minutes starts now.
You know, what inspired me to run for the city council? I think I have to look back to growing up and the, you know, the wisdom and guidance and values that my parents shared with me about serving and getting involved, whether it was my church, whether it was the community, whether it was volunteering. And that's really carried me through to high school, into college at the University of Minnesota, and into the different places that I have lived. I know when we first moved to Farmington, again in June of 2004, one of the first things I did was reach out to learn more about who was on the city council, what the hot-button actions were, some of the, learn more about the folks that were involved politically. And ironically, it was actually about a month after we moved to Farmington that I chose to run for the city council in 2004. My wife thought I was absolutely crazy. Why in the world would you do that? We've only lived here a month. And I said, well, honey, you know, worst-case scenario is I meet a ton of amazing people and best-case scenario, I get to earn an opportunity to do something I really want to do, which is serve the community. And I was fortunate enough to finish in a position where I was appointed to the council and actually have served on the council previously for six years. Now, fast forward up to today, I've spent seven years on the Economic Development Authority, which I think gives me a tremendous perspective on business development and the tax implications and taxing issues. I've also been involved as a coach with youth baseball, travel baseball, travel basketball. I've been a leader with the local Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and actually that's how I met Leroux, one of the former Eagle Scout individuals who's also a candidate tonight. So I've had the opportunity to meet wonderful people. The question might be, you know, why did I choose to run again? I've had a lot of people over the last, you know, one to two years ask me to consider running. And I suppose what probably tipped me over the edge was my children who said, you know, come on, Dad, you were really good at the city council and I really think you should give it another shot. And of course, you know, who wants to let their kids down? But I really think with my experience previously in the city council and the leadership that I've offered there and my leadership in the Economic Development Authority, I think I'm poised to be in a really good position to hit the ground running to serve the residents of Farmington. I also think some of the recent events have inspired me as well. We have an amazing police and fire department and no doubt you can drive around town and see about 1,000 signs in people's yards with support. We have an amazing police and fire department, one that I support strongly. And we have opportunities for growth and I'm looking forward to being part of that growth while keeping your taxes in check and working as hard as I possibly can. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, same question. I'm going to say it one more time. What inspired you and what leadership skills do you bring? Three minutes, starting now.
What inspired me to run is I grew up in a small town. My dad was the local pharmacist and a town of 800 people, so everybody knew my dad and our family. I love the fact that, you know, everyone really participated in everything that they did, whether it was the superintendent or the pharmacist or the doctor in town, everybody, they're all friends, they're all in a club together, the Lions Club. And just seeing that through the years, we've always, wherever we've been, we've always been involved with different organizations just to be part of the community, number one, just to grow friendships and things like that. I, like I said, as far as, you know, things that I have to offer, basically, is I've come to this 53 years of my life to find out that I love to serve people and I care about people deeply. And it's just been, it's very rewarding for me to be able to help. I'm a fiscally responsible person when it comes to dollars spent, you know, I certainly want to be accountable to the city's money, number one, my money, anybody else's money. And I think that that really is a character that somebody needs to have in just caring for not just, not only your own needs, but for all the other needs that you're working for. And I've just been involved with a lot of different things that have just brought me a lot of gratitude. We've been in, like I said, the J.C.'s when we were younger. We were asked to be on the Christian Life Marketing Team, my wife and I, for quite a few years and helped grow that school. And very gratifying, we basically got to really become great friends with the core group of friends that we have through that organization. So there again, it just inspires you to, I don't know, just have relationships. And I guess really what I'm trying to tell you here is I'm somebody who cares about people. I like to be involved and that's just something that really matters to me and my family.
Onto our next question. We'll begin with Mr. Cosse this time. Farmington Mayor Todd Larson ends each council meeting with the friendly reminder for residents to shop local. Now this advice will be more important with the pandemic as many local businesses face challenges. What ideas do you have on how residents can better support small business? Three minutes and go.
So how can the citizens support local businesses here in Farmington? That's a very important question and extremely important now that the businesses are all affected during the COVID-19 pandemic that we are in. Like the question mentioned, Mayor Todd always ends the meetings by saying that we need to shop local, which has always been important and is very important now during the pandemic. My friend Katie over here, she mentioned earlier about how Wang's Kitchen was going down under and Farmington kind of rallied together and helped gather money and resources and stuff to help that business and help get it back on its feet during the pandemic. And Farmington has a special way of always helping support either its residents or businesses and even, you know, it wasn't even him having patrons or it was just Farmington getting together and showing support for that business. One thing that the city, that I see within the city as a problem is, like Todd always says, we need to shop local. I know all my friends, all my family, every time we need to buy food or go grocery shopping or buy clothes or anything, we all go out of town. Everyone goes to Lakeville or Apple Valley or Rosemount or something like that, where I would say, well, no, we need to go to a restaurant in Farmington or we need to go to a store in Farmington to shop. So one main thing that we need to focus on is obviously shopping local. But I mean, there's many incentives and programs that we as like the city could put out or the government could, you know, help put out to help promote other businesses, our current local businesses as well. You know, there's great things that we have, like we have like weeks for shopping local and small business Saturdays and things like that, which is a great support for our local businesses. But it's almost to a point where maybe the citizens of Farmington, even if we all shop local, wouldn't be able to support our local businesses. And it might be something that we have to reach out and try to expand to other cities and try to get other cities to come into Farmington, get other customers and other patrons to, instead of shopping in Lakeville and all of our neighboring cities, to come to Farmington and visit our local businesses and our local shops. So it's more of just a matter of maybe marketing our businesses and getting behind them and showing support and kind of making them aware, making them know. Not everyone knows that we have all restaurants downtown Farmington and we have all these local businesses that are great, different stuff, different aspects of our town and just making people aware of them is very helpful.
Ms. Craig, what ideas do you have on how residents can better support small business? Three minutes and here we go.
Yes, this year has been extremely difficult for families, for residents, for businesses, and for the city staff and for the council in Farmington. COVID has been something that has knocked all of us off of our game and is something that we don't know when it'll end. And it is obviously a great concern about the businesses in Farmington and how to support them. And one of the things that we did do as a city council is we received CARE Acts from the government and we provided loans for businesses that have been struggling, meeting their goals and their financial goals and making payments. This was, what we did is we contacted all the different business people in Farmington and we made them aware of this CARES Act and how they were available to receive these funds and what they needed to do to apply for them. And I personally thought it was so important, I started going around to the businesses myself and talking to people to make sure they knew about it. I thought that this is the one thing that we can do to help support them. Farmington gave over $500,000 of government money to the program for the CARE Act. Beyond that, the EDA, which I'm also a member of, we had some grants to help keep some businesses stay afloat. We in the EDA, as well as in the council, are always looking for ways to help support businesses in Farmington. We are trying to be more and more creative and think outside the box, but it is something that we continually is on our radar. As far as the residents are concerned, I think one of the things that, as mentioned earlier, Farmington is so good at is rallying around individuals or even a town in case of crisis like we have been in. And I think one of the things that we need to think of and remind ourselves is to continue doing that, is we have fatigue and as we get weary from the COVID, that we keep supporting each other. I know that this winter, there's going to be some events that some of the businesses downtown have talked to me about that they want to have, where they're where they're, people are going to be maybe doing some caroling outside, going to all the businesses door to door. And those are the types of things we really need to support the businesses going forward. Those are the things that are are going to keep them existing in the times that are still difficult and and trying at best. I think that we all need to be kind to each other, kind and loving, and give of ourselves as much as possible to help those in need. And I think that we do need to think outside the box because things are different this year. It's not business as normal. And so anything that we can do to stimulate more business in town and to provide support for the businesses and residents, I think that's what we should be involved in. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, what ideas do you have on how residents can better support small businesses?
Yeah, as been previously mentioned, you know, it's certainly been a challenging year for the community and I know that the city council has done a nice job with taking federal grant money and trying to allocate, I believe, about five hundred thousand, which is slated to be distributed to Farmington businesses. And as noted by Robin as well, on the Economic Development Authority of which I serve, we were able to find a utility program which is able to serve the business community as well. I think though, in terms of, you know, how do we connect residents with businesses? I think there's one area which I see a really big opportunity. And it's not, you know, completely untried in the past, but I think we needed to start it again and be more proactive with it. And that's really reaching out to the business community to find out, you know, what they need. How can the city help support them? And of course, you know, as the council and and those at the city know, the city does not have an unlimited pot of money to be able to, you know, distribute to the businesses. Obviously, we wish that we were in a position to be able to do that. But I think absent that reality, we have to really engage and talk with the business owners and find out, you know, how can the city partner with you? How can we work with you to help draw more customers to your business? I will say that I've been extremely impressed by the business community and their flexibility, whether it's curbside pickup, whether it's delivery, whether it's using other community resources to partner to deliver their goods and services. I know that in talking with just Ace Hardware as being one business and Dakota Lumber, I think, being another, those are two businesses that, you know, we saw a lot of house and, you know, house remodeling and improvement that people found opportunities to do during those first couple of months of COVID. But I think supporting our local business has never been more important. And I think as a council, what I'd like to see is more open dialogue on a continual basis, so that way the business community feels that one-on-one dialogue. Not just during the pandemic, which we're experiencing now, but as a continual basis. And I think our local business community is going to be one of our most critical components to business growth in the future. They're wonderful people. They live here. They're established here. And I think they will be important to help connect residents with their businesses. And we certainly want to be an important part of that from the city to ensure that our money stays local.
We'll move on to Mr. Edwards, same question. How can residents better support small businesses in the area?
Yeah, I believe, you know, to inspire business, you know, or to inspire the, you know, residents to shop local, I think it's it's just important for us to kind of, kind of get back to that Farmington pride. And I shouldn't really phrase it that way. There is a lot of Farmington pride. And I think just if there's any way of having any type of events, you know, getting back to having our due days. Again, that brings people downtown. And there again, just really helping with, I think, other businesses that that we can, you know, invite to to come into this, into our downtown or whether it's outside of the downtown. Other businesses will certainly inspire more people to kind of come to Farmington and actively use Farmington, you know, use those local businesses. I guess what I'm trying to say is, is other businesses really help other, you know, they they kind of feed on each other. And I think that it's important for us to really help that.
And Ms. Porter, what ideas do you have on how residents can better support small businesses?
Interestingly, I find that every day, just going throughout my my daily routine here in Farmington, such as this evening, I learn of new businesses. So Moving Tree, videography. And just last week, talking to Rich, who is the owner at Quick Ship Plus Downtown, and just asking him as a business owner, what what are his needs right now, especially during this time? And I think, you know, there could be some collaboration there. So he was talking about the city promoting his business and, you know, things like putting a video out there to bring in people from outside of Farmington to to patron our small businesses. And Rich specifically has a lot to offer. He was a one-stop shop. I was able to get something notarized, something printed and something faxed all in, you know, within ten minutes. And I think that's that's really cool that we have that right here in town. I think also being a military family, you learn a lot of resilience. And when I think of the word support, camaraderie comes to mind. And I I think as residents, the best thing that we can do for businesses is just to come alongside them, like they did with Wings and figure out what their needs are and just rally around them. Rallying support for these businesses is not just to patron them, but to to spread the word. And I think, you know, we have this wonderful tool of social media. And I think when we have that good experience, we we go out and we tell other people and word of mouth is really powerful. And, you know, at the beginning of the shutdown, like Steve mentioned, the businesses did really well with getting creative with curbside and delivery and all of that. And it was really cool to see places like Bourbon Butcher have, you know, lines for a mile. And so, and again, they they were able to, you know, have the news tell a story and I I heard of people coming from, you know, within an hour away, coming for their 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 feast that they were putting on. And so I think it's just really important that the local businesses also patron one another and that there is that camaraderie between them and the residents, where we just really have that sense of community to support one another, no matter what is what is yet to come. Thank you.
Our third question, and we'll begin with Ms. Craig this time. The city council is responsible for setting goals and balancing the city's annual budget in what may be a short or long-term economic recession. What is your view about attracting new commercial retail development in Farmington?
Well, first of all, I'm going to tackle the first part of that question. Balancing the debt is something that we have as a priority each year. We are always working with a very delicate balance between needs and wants and and trying to keep the taxes down. This year in particular has been a little bit more challenging because of COVID and some of the other things that are going on that is affecting the community. But it's always something that is on our mind as well as attracting new businesses. And that's where I actually have a little bit of good news for everybody because I think that even though COVID has shut a lot of things down, we're seeing some movement in Farmington that we haven't seen before. And I think there's several reasons for that and I will get into that. But first of all, we are having a growth spurt as far as building is concerned. And we have the highest rate of construction permits that have been requested since two thousand and sixteen. So that's a good sign that there is growth and strong progress going on in Farmington. We also just approved an apartment complex, a fifty-two unit apartment complex that is going to be built, starting either the end of November or the beginning of spring, depending on when everything gets set up. And that's something that we haven't had for a long time. Last time there was an apartment complex built in Farmington was in the sixties. So that's all positive growth. But on top of that, one of the things we're seeing, which is a sad reason we're seeing it, but it's going to be positive for Farmington. If you talk to realtors, there's a lot of people that are moving out of the Twin Cities. They're moving out of areas that they feel are, they have some concerns about riots, looting and just aren't safe for their families. And they're coming south and they're coming this direction. If you look in on Pilot Knob, you will see that most of the the areas in Apple Valley are pretty much filled. All the housing areas that were open are almost filled. They are coming to Farmington, folks. I think once we get COVID behind us, I think we are going to explode in Farmington. I really do. I believe that with all my heart. I believe that when the importance of having the growth continue as far as building and homes is concerned is that when companies look at moving down here, large companies look at moving down here, they look at the population, they look at the rooftops. It's all part of a calculated figure of dollars and cents, why it makes sense to move down here. And I believe that because of what is going on right now, that it's all going to be coming our way and it's just going to be a matter of getting COVID behind us. And I feel very positive about this. I know a lot of people might not agree, but I have a sense that we are on the cusp of exploding.
Mr. Wilson, what is your view about attracting new commercial and retail development in Farmington?
Well, I think all of us here in the current city council would probably agree that we hope that there's not a prolonged recession. I will say though, that it is going to be extremely critical to make sure that the city council is very focused in the near term and obviously long term with our financial plan and our financial goals. And I think obviously maintaining a solid budget, maintaining low taxes are obviously going to be beneficial to business. Robin also alluded to the fact that, has mentioned a little bit about the E D A. And one thing that I think is exciting from the E D A perspective is that we also are doing, we also do three-year strategic plans. And we're actually now moving our three-year strategic plan to a little bit more of an implementation coming up at our October meeting where we're looking at different strategies to attract and retain business. So in terms of, you know, how do you attract and retain business? Robin is absolutely correct and I would concur with her perspective on new housing. I do think Farmington, for all of the great characteristics about it, who we are that we've already talked about earlier during this forum, is going to continue to attract people to Farmington. And it is absolutely true that a business will research and analyze a lot of factors. Who we are, where we shop, what size families we have, what our demographic looks like. They know a lot about us in a good way that helps them make decisions. So what we need to do as an Economic Development Authority, as a city council, is keep taxes low and find ways to promote Farmington, work with our landowners and actually work with our existing business owners. You know, as I alluded to earlier, our greatest asset is our current business owners to help shape what the future of Farmington is going to look like, along with all of you. And I think that partnership and collaboration is going to help build, allow us to build and grow Farmington in exciting ways. And I share Robin's enthusiasm. I'm extremely positive about the future of Farmington. It's one of the reasons I I entered this race. And really believe that we are a community poised for growth. And, you know, far be it for me to say this, but we could get to a point where residents say, whoa, slow down a little bit. We're going a little bit too fast. You know, obviously, at this point, I think we'd like the pace to speed up a little bit. But obviously, with any type of economic uncertainty, the best thing we can do during that time is protect our homeowners and protect our businesses with low taxes, a good, solid financial plan and us as a council working together to make sure that we're serving the residents and businesses.
Next is Mr. Edwards. What is your view on attracting new commercial and retail development in the city of Farmington?
Yeah, I'm going to go with what, you know, Stephen Robin said, and I really agree with that. I think that as, you know, our town grows here, there's a lot of businesses out there that are looking at us probably more than we think. And I think really the the big thing that, you know, Farmington can do, you know, the city council can do is really just manage things well and really open up, you know, whether it's dealing with our our landowners and just really working in a situation where when when they are ready to come, when the demographics do look good for them to, like say Hy-Vee with the land that they own out in our industrial park there. I I do believe that once those numbers look right, they are going to build. And so a lot of those services that we're kind of lacking in right now, I think we will certainly start flourishing. And so I think really just the big key that is just to really manage well, be patient. And I think we will then benefit from all of that.
Moving on to Ms. Porter, what is your view about attracting new commercial and retail development in Farmington?
I think talking to residents, I often hear about people's concern for, you know, our our taxes here being high in comparison to what what the community has to offer. I I think certainly as a young family that there's some frustration with the fact that, you know, especially in the south side of town where we live, you know, you're traveling at least twenty minutes to, you know, any any grocery store. And that's, you know, with winter coming, not always a realistic and feasible option for everyone. And so everyone's aware, or most everyone's aware, that, you know, Hy-Vee, Aldi, Taco Bell, they've all purchased land way off by McDonald's or, you know, as some people would say, the the bridge to nowhere currently. And I think we're going to have to get very creative with the way the economy looks right now. We're going to have to get super creative about going directly up the chain to those big businesses and promoting Farmington. You know, if we are going to see residential growth, that's wonderful. And I think we also need to look at the fact that we don't have a lot of commercial zoning land available for people to build on. So again, getting creative in ways that we're promoting the current businesses and retaining the current businesses here. But also, we might have to look at rezoning for some commercial areas. And again, getting really creative with with who we're going to contact and who we're speaking with as far as economic growth for the city of Farmington. Again, I think collaboration is really big on this too. I know Robin and Steve have both mentioned the E D A. I think when you have city council, you have the E D A, you have, you know, the the city finance department, I think there's going to have to be continued collaboration on creativity and how we're promoting the city of Farmington with business growth. And I do hope, especially as a young mom, to see a grocery store come to town, as I know that is a, that's a huge need for people in all walks of life in Farmington. Thank you.
And Mr. Koss, what is your view about attracting new commercial and retail development in the city of Farmington?
So to start off, in terms of a possible upcoming recession, the way the Farmington's budget is set up right now, it is, you know, we are in good standing. The city is in financial good standing for long term, especially if there was an upcoming recession coming forward. But the city, we need to set a fiscal plan and we need to stick to that plan. There is a lot of growth happening in Farmington. That's being said, there's lots of new businesses coming in. There's lots of housing developments being put up, apartment complexes that are coming in, lots of construction permits being pulled for the city. But we need to make sure that we're sticking on top of that growth and making sure that it's actually happening and keeping it going, not just letting it stop, you know, after the last construction permit comes in. We need to be on the ground level, making sure that businesses actually want to come in. We need to keep a polished image of our city, so residents do want to come in and live in Farmington and businesses do want to come in and open a business here in Farmington. One thing that we would need to work on, I think, would be our infrastructure. If big, big, big box retailers or any other sort of business wants wants to come in, they want to see a good infrastructure set in place for for their businesses and for high traffics of customers or even like a workforce to come in. So I think we're set up pretty well with our infrastructure, but there is some areas of work that can be done to allow or to incentive, for an incentive for bigger businesses to want to come in to the city. But yeah, we need to get down on the ground level and bridge the gap between our current landowners and also potential business owners. We could reach out to landowners and, you know, maintain a good relationship with them and say, well, trying to figure out maybe if they're going to sell their land, maybe if the city needs to work, work on maybe the road around that land or work on the infrastructure around the land. Just, you know, staying on the ground level, keeping the city informed and keeping the residents informed on any sort of businesses or any even potential residents that want to come in as well.
Our fourth question is in regards to property redevelopment. The question is, what do you think about the potential economic development vision where the city could potentially buy the empty and former Dakota Motors commercial property lot to have a redeveloper build new downtown housing on top of retail businesses? to have a redeveloper build new downtown housing on top of retail businesses? Mr. Wilson, you will begin.
The corner of Third and Elm is, in my opinion, the most critical corner to get right. And I was fortunate enough to serve in the downtown redevelopment task force a couple of years ago. And one of the visions for that corner is a mixed-use retail housing, which I think would be a fantastic, which I do think is a fantastic vision for downtown. Now, who should purchase that land and develop that land? I do not think the city of Farmington should be in the land acquisition business. But what I do think is I do think the city should be actively engaged in partnering with real estate developers for that development. So for example, there are a number of tools that we have created to, I guess as it were, expand the toolbox of resources that we have to offer to private developers. That includes tax incentives, that includes various tax abatement, different funding strategies. And, you know, keep in mind if you're a resident listening, you know, I'm not looking to just, you know, put all kinds of tax incentives out there. But the reality is, in order to draw some commercial and retail developments and redevelopments, there does need to be certain tax incentives that are at least presented. And so I think most developers would be looking for that. But that corner is critical and that vision that was spoke about in the question is one that I really support. And why do I think it's so critical? We have, as a community, both as a council, as an economic development authority, for as long as I've been in this community and for prior, have invested a lot of energy into downtown. And the reason is simple. It's historic. It is somewhere you just wanna be. You know, Homestead Community Church is just one phenomenal example of the EDA partnering with two community members and a vision to make something amazing happen. And, you know, you look at Pam Heickel and her building and the things that we've been able to do there. So, long answer short, yes, that is a critical corner. I support that vision. I think it's a great vision for downtown. I think it's critical, actually, for our entire economic activity in Farmington. Should the city of Farmington purchase the property using taxpayer dollars? No. I do not support taxpayer dollars to purchase the property. Instead, I think the better approach is to make sure that the city, the economic development authority and private investment works hand-in-hand in collaboration to make that vision happen.
Mr. Edwards, I'll read the question again. It's about the potential for the city to buy the empty and former Dakota Motors commercial property lot to have a redeveloper build new downtown housing atop retail businesses.
Yeah, that corner is very important. It's a very large structure, 14,000 square feet, I believe, the Dakota Motors corner there. I believe it's really important to get it right, just as Steve mentioned, because it is our downtown, it is historic. We want to make sure that the, you know, just, you know, that's the first thing you see as you drive through the town there. You don't want it to cover up or take away from what we have as you go down our main street. I do not think at all that the city should get involved with purchasing that property. I think that we need to incentivize some type of a builder or whether it's a chain or, anyway, somebody with some ideas that will actually encourage growth for more of those buildings that are vacant downtown there right now. We need to, you know, we really need to be, it to be kind of the fire that kind of helps grow the rest of that downtown. And then that will encourage a lot of folks to really come downtown and enjoy our downtown if we can get that right. I just think that is a really big, a big decision right there.
Ms. Porter, what do you think about the potential to have a redeveloper build new downtown housing on top of retail businesses?
I would agree with what was said prior with Stephen Eric that the heart of a downtown is definitely something that draws people to that city. I think that's a wonderful opportunity for those that are coming through Highway 50 or coming through downtown area to come up with something that is extremely attractive to bring people into town instead of just passing through. I would also agree that the city, that would not be fiscally responsible for the city to purchase that area. Honestly, this is a question that I would definitely want real-time community involvement in finding a solution to. I think it's not something that I can necessarily answer the best off the cuff like this. Obviously, if elected, my job is to listen to our community members and not make, you know, any arbitrary decisions that are simply my own perspective. And so if I'm being completely honest, I would definitely just want more time to to think about the question and to really dig deep into where we could go with that. And again, like Eric said, to incentivize another purchaser to come in. I don't know that more residential in that area is necessarily the best idea either. But certainly, again, to incentivize another buyer to come in and do something wonderful with that area. So, thank you.
Mr. Cass, whenever you're ready.
So that property in question is a very important property, and it's a very important aspect of our downtown and of Farmington community. But I think that's something that the city should not buy because the city wouldn't be financially responsible for the city to purchase that property or probably any other property. That's something where we would need to look at working with, like it was said before, different real estate developers in coming in and developing it. But that's not something the city should be using the citizens' tax dollars to do. That's also something like mentioned earlier, a different tax incentives might be necessary to kind of get different landowners or different business developers in to develop some of the downtown area. Now, that specific property is of high importance, but I think we need to look at all of the downtown properties as well. There's a lot of vacant buildings and a lot of updating and remodeling that can be done as well. And that's something that the city council needs to sit down and look at and see. I know we have some, there were some different redevelopment plans for the downtown area, but there is different maybe rezoning or code enforcements that we can look at, different ordinances that we could take part in. But really, we need to sit down and, you know, look at working with different developers on the different sites that Farmington has that are sitting empty or talking to the landowners or the business owners that we, you know, we can just kind of help bridge that gap in between a vacant building that no one is using between a business owner and a lot of patrons and happy citizens. The downtown area is really the heart of our community and it's a very important and historical aspect of our city. And we need to make sure, looking, and we need to look and make sure that it's reaching its full potential.
Ms. Craig, your thoughts on the former Dakota Motors building to have a redeveloper build new downtown housing on top of retail businesses?
Two years ago, the Farmington council decided that we needed to do an update for the Farmington development plan downtown. And so we took the time to have that done. We actually had residents. We put out information online and in different sources and let people know that we wanted their opinions and to give us some input on what they thought would be appropriate or would be nice as we're looking at redevelopment in the future. When that information came back, one of the things that did pop up was mixed uses. So to the point where whether or not there could be mixed uses downtown and have apartments or kind of minims or something above buildings, that is something that we have looked at. And we said that is, we know that that is attractive to a lot of people and a lot of towns are starting to move in that direction. As far as specifically having to do with the Dakota Motors building, that one is, yeah, it is critical. And as everybody has already stated, it's the first thing you see when you come downtown. And to have that done right is critical. We did discuss whether or not we wanted to purchase that property, and we decided no. It wouldn't be prudent or wise for us to do so. And as mentioned by others here today, that we are not in the business of owning real estate. But we have tried to do some things. We have been thinking about and trying to talk to some different people about partnering together, like different developers in Farmington coming together and being willing to partner together to buy Dakota Motors. It's, you have some dual expenses. You have to tear it down and then you have to rebuild. And it's not something that, up until now, any one person has wanted to take on. And that's the reason why you have sat there. I actually have run into a couple of people that told me that they were interested in that particular slot, that building area, but it was cost prohibitive. So I think that the thing that we need to do as a city council is to think of creative ways that we can maybe push this further ahead and get some movement on this. Come up with some ideas that are creative. And here again, maybe work with some investors to partner together to build a new building there and create something dynamic for Farmington that would be noteworthy.
And now we come to our final question of the evening. If budget constraints were not an issue, what public improvements would you like to see the city council tackle in this next four-year term? And we will start with Mr. Edwards.
Well, if budget was not a concern, and I guess what we really need to do is, you know, if we can help out our residents by lowering their taxes, that would be a great opportunity for people. And then also too, we really, you know, if creating opportunities for businesses to come to town with incentives, if we could, you know, if there's not a budget concern, we could certainly incent some folks to come to this area so that we would have a lot of the services that we really direly need so that we don't have to drive up to our nearby communities, put, you know, a 20-mile drive to just go get groceries. Just, there's so many things. Our downtown incentivizing people to, you know, work on those storefronts, kind of create an ambiance, kind of that quaint little downtown, something that our residents can be really proud of. Just really just creating that storybook main street, but one that is productive also with restaurants and shops and just all the things that we all really fancy when we are out enjoying ourselves in our community. But there again, it's just, if there was no budget concerns there, that would be something to do, just something fun to do, wouldn't it?
Ms. Porter, if budget constraints were not an issue, what public improvements would you like to see the city council tackle in the next four-year term?
I guess I would definitely approach this question as a young family, which I know that there are a lot of us in Farmington here that often, especially in the summertime, have no option but to travel up to Apple Valley or Rosemont. Speaking specifically of things like a splash pad, a community pool, which I know we had, and unfortunately, the house we bought just down the road, we were, you know, a day late and a dollar short on getting our kids in that neighborhood prior to the community pool closing, which is unfortunate. We have many great parks in Farmington, but I think adding things, like I said, a splash pad or a pool, again, talking about budget not being an issue, because obviously those are things that the community would love to provide if that was not an issue. I think we need, you know, a couple hotels, again, to incentivize people staying here in Farmington if they don't have people to stay with. Obviously, a grocery store, that's a great need. Smaller specialty stores. I know we have great boutiques downtown like Town Sports and Urban Revival and things like that, which are really fun to shop at. But bringing more of those kind of things to downtown that are boutiques and little fun things like that. Diners, I know, you know, for our senior community, bringing them back to the good old days, having things where Legacy and Trinity could bring residents down to downtown and having events like bringing them back to, you know, the days of poodle skirts and old cars and things like that. So also things like for our youth, arcades, things like rock and jump in Eagan or just different recreational places for the youth to go to, definitely would be something I would wanna look at without the budget limitation. So I think, I think there's a lot of things that we could bring to Farmington here that as young families we could utilize and that we really would benefit from. So, thank you.
Mr. Cass, if budget was not an issue, what public improvements would you like to see the city council tackle over the next four years?
So if there was no restrictions on our budget, that would obviously be amazing. But there would hopefully be a couple of things that we could do right away to help fix up the city a little bit. One thing that I would hopefully do right away would be to pay off the city's debt. We have been slowly paying it off, but if there were no budget restriction, I would hope that we could first and foremost get rid of the debt that we have hanging over our heads. Next, I would also like to work on paying, or not paying, but lowering the tax burden on our citizens. It's a little bit higher than the city is surrounding us and that's something that we hear every day from the residents and the business owners and everyone in the community. So hopefully that would be something that we could do as well is to kind of lower down the tax burden that is on our citizens and on our homeowners. Another thing that would be really nice would be to work on our infrastructure a little bit, as I mentioned earlier. We have a great infrastructure, but there are some room for improvements, you know, some sidewalk projects, some road projects, all sorts of things like that. Maybe developing some empty lots or sites that, or areas around empty lots and empty sites that would open us up to allowing bigger businesses to come in and a higher traffic of people and even customers for those businesses to come in through. But again, just development and redevelopment of the city. There's, we have a wonderful city, a wonderful downtown area, but there is room for development and a lot of redevelopment as well. Hopefully, we could allocate some of those budget funds to redeveloping some of the downtown areas that need some love. But yeah, I think that that would be good to do as well, so.
Ms. Craig, go ahead.
If the budget was not an option or anything we had to worry about in the next four years, there is so many things I would wanna do. I don't know if I can even list them all. But one of the things that we would do is create a new ice arena with an extra sheet. We can't build a sheet. We've done tests and we've looked at the land. We cannot build another sheet down where we have it currently, but we would like to expand and have more ice arena. That brings businesses into town. It brings finances. Here again, if we had hotels and things like that, we'd be bringing a lot of money into Farmington. The other thing is, we have land set aside for the Rambling River Park downtown, which was an area that we wanted to create that families could come down and celebrate. And we could have all kinds of different festivals down there. And we even, we're gonna have a splash pad. So there you go. So we would have our splash pad. Another thing that has been proposed and has, we have talked about, but here again, it's just not on our budget, is to have a multi-level athletic area built on the north side of town, which would encompass many different types of athletic activities. That would, I would love to do. Again, I think that swimming pool would be great. As long as we're making a wish list, let's put the swimming pool on it because everybody wants a swimming pool. And on top of that, I think that all the roads and trails would need to be surfaced. Right now, we have a five-year plan. We're strategically doing that, but it would be great. If we didn't have a budget, we could just have them all in perfect, perfect condition right now. I would love that. And pay off the city debt. I agree with that. That is something that hangs over all cities, and we have been lowering our debt. And it has been something that we are bringing it down and we feel a lot more comfortable with where it's at. But certainly, let's do that as well and then lower the taxes.
Mr. Wilson, if the sky was the limit, what public improvements would you like to see in the city of Farmington?
Yeah, obviously, that's a very compelling question. And I don't know that my answers are gonna be quite as interesting as my colleagues up here tonight. I do think though, borrowing from Robin's comment, and having two of my kids, one that is currently playing hockey, there's absolutely desperate need for a second sheet of ice. So I do think the vision of additional ice in Farmington is absolutely an infrastructure goal that I would look at. And I think that it does provide and could provide broader community benefits. So I do think that would be exciting. Thinking about it a little bit more though, in terms of infrastructure improvements, maybe a little bit more of a boring answer, but one that is something I see almost every day. I look at the corner of 50 and Flagstaff and the danger with that area. Fortunately, you know, thank you, Jesus, we have not had a serious situation at that corner. But that would be a huge infrastructure improvement that I would like to partner with Dakota County on. And of course, with Dakota County, they have to have certain thresholds of activity or situations that have happened. And I would really like to work with our Dakota County representative. And I would really like to work with our Dakota County Representative and Dakota County to figure out a way to improve fifty and Flagstaff. Following from fifty and Flagstaff, there is, it's kind of the one missing connection in Farmington, which is a trail from Highway fifty all the way to one ninety-fifth. That would have such a tremendous benefit on the entire community as well as all the high school athletes. I had a cross-country runner and track, uh, runner, in fact, I had two cross-country athletes and, and track athletes. And that road spells danger, D-A-N-G-E-R. Thank you to my, uh, elementary, uh, uh, I can't even believe I just spelled danger, but I just did. But it's a very dangerous, um, segment of road for our student athletes and one that I really think needs to be addressed. I do understand why it wasn't completed during the time that we were looking at building the high school, but it's a really critical stretch of trail that we need to finish. I think from an infrastructure standpoint, again, maybe not as exciting as a splash pad, we need to figure out a way to, again, work with Dakota County at the intersection right across or the intersection on Pilot Knob right by, um, Speedway Gas Station. That is a really dangerous intersection and, you know, as I've indicated earlier, I'm really positive uh, and optimistic about our growth here and that's going to further exacerbate that particular intersection. So, I think there's some exciting opportunities and I think there's some core key opportunities which we need to address, uh, in that, uh, with that question posed. Thank you.
And now it's time for our closing statements. We will begin with, Mr. Wilson, you have two minutes for closing remarks.
Well, again, I want to thank all the residents and businesses who have taken the time to watch this tonight. One thing I will say right off the top, it would be an honor for me to serve with anyone that you see up here. It would be an honor to serve with any one of our three mayoral, mayoral candidates. So, one, uh, you know, one, uh, I had a resident ask me a week or two ago, well, you know, how could you possibly serve with that person or this person? And, you know, I'll tell you what, there are eight candidates who are running for different positions in Farmington and it takes a lot of courage by all of us to run. And we all have convictions, we all want lower taxes, we all care deeply about this community. And the key part of it is going to be working together. I can assure you that there's going to be decisions that I make which might bother you, which might upset you. And there's going to be other decisions that I make which you're going to be cheering, yeah, Steve Wilson, way to go, you made the right decision. And that's going to happen for any council member, it's going to happen for the mayor. The reality is, we're all working as a team. We all want to improve the quality of life in Farmington, which is already really high. You know, this is a great place to live, as we've already talked about. But I think the key is going to be having a council that works together. Because I'll tell you, based on my experience working on the council before and working on the Economic Development Authority, if you have a team that works together, working for, um, you know, improving the quality of life, working to bring in business, working to lower taxes, working to improve, um, your bond rating, thus lowering your overall, uh, bonded debt tax ratio, you know, that takes a team effort. It takes a team of working with the mayor and the council and it takes a team of working with the city staff. And I'm looking forward to serving you and I hope you vote for Steve Wilson on November third. Thank you.
Ms. Craig, your closing remarks.
Right now, when politics has become so divisive, you need someone you can trust to do what's right for the town of Farmington. Anyone who knows me, who is enacted with me, will believe me when I say I am a woman of faith, values family. I am honest, full of integrity and support justice. My life is an open book. I promise to serve Farmington utilizing the qualities in my decision-making process. Farmington is a great town to serve and live in. Thank you for your time and consideration and again, it would be an honor to serve you for another four years.
Mr. Cass, we're ready for your closing statement.
Again, I would like to give my thanks to Luke Porter and Moving Tree Media, as well as the city of Farmington for hosting this public forum debate. I would also like to thank everyone who is watching us here today, as well as my fellow candidates to join me up here and taking part in this election. If elected, I will strive to take our city to the next level. We must be financially responsible, goal-oriented and community-driven. I will serve as an example of community involvement and city leadership. We must play an active role in engaging with our community, as well as our businesses and every other aspect of our city. I'm running for Farmington City Council because as a lifelong resident of Farmington, I will serve the residents by being active on the ground level and working directly with the people. We must listen to the community's wants and needs and bring these issues back to our work on the city council for resolution. The city council makes decisions that directly affect our everyday lives and needs to be both informed and decisive in the decisions that are made. I am a determined, focused and practical leader and if elected, I will help the city of Farmington to reach its full potential. Thank you very much.
Ms. Porter, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Thank you again, uh, for having us here, to the city of Farmington and to Luke and Kara for putting this together. Um, and to, uh, my fellow candidates, this was really an enjoyable time. And, um, we are coming to the end of one of the most difficult years in many of our lives thus far. Aside from nine eleven, when our country was rocked by acts of terrorism, which was a tragic time in our nation's history that even many now, or young adults now, are even too young to remember. The United States has not seen this intense of an impact on its entirety, a pandemic which at present has a worldwide effect in over a century. We continue to see more divide among our leaders, more devastation within our local communities and the increased decline of morale is completely disheartening. The eighth grader who was quoted at the vice presidential debate recently is saying, if our leaders can't get along, how are our citizens supposed to get along? Is a question that I believe resonates with not only us as adults, but many of our young people in the current struggle with the confusion these times have created and where we as adults and leaders need to do so much better. It is vital that we as a community understand the importance of working together and being involved in all aspects of improving our city, beginning with the overall attitude of ways that we approach innovation and collaborate on goals. As an elected leader, it is our responsibility, our duty, to be approachable, relatable, accessible and transparent. Without a local Farmington newspaper anymore to help bring awareness to city happenings and with a rise in what we call keyboard warriors, creating a sense of insecurities and lack of confidence in city officials, now more than ever, we need to find new and creative ways to promote our city, to bring awareness to local happenings, even outside of social media, to show our support and encouragement to our core services and city leaders as their positions become all the more challenging and to highlight the small businesses in town that will continue to need our support to bring them out of these unprecedented times. The city of Farmington has so much to offer and if elected, I am committing, committed to helping restore the heartbeat of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, your closing remarks.
I may not have all the answers, however, if elec- if elected, I submit to you and I promise to listen and always be a student of the role that you have given me the privilege to serve upon. I will strive to serve the residents of Farmington, just as I would for myself, to have a safe and prosperous community. I want to be an active participant in the change and growth of the city of Farmington. As I speak to people and live in this community, I see their vision, I hear their stories. I want to be a person of integrity who will lead the way to address their issues and make their visions come to life. I want to serve as your voice, as I know all of us carry a sense of pride for the place that we call home. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you tonight and for allowing us to have, uh, well, us to have the time to share with you who we are and the heart that we have for the community of Farmington. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the candidates for their responses. To read more about each candidate in their own words, check out the Dakota County Tribune Voters Guide, either the printed edition or the online edition. We'd like to thank you for watching this video and we'd encourage you to share this video with your friends and neighbors so that you can be informed as you plan out your votes either early or on November third. Have a good night.